Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Just for record, the live feed for the TV tonight is not working, but this will be taped and aired later. So, first thing is salute the flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which spans one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Okay, and this is the selectmen's meeting for April 30th for the town of Acton, Maine. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
No, second that.
Moving to second it, any discussion? All for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make a motion to table the minutes of the last meeting.
No, second that.
Okay, we will table that. Okay, item three, department heads and committee chair updates. Anybody that want to come up other than what we got on the list? Nope. Director of Planning. It's Ken, Ken? There he is.
Evening.
How you doing?
So, we had a couple of issues hopefully you guys could help us with. One was in the fee schedule. There was a line that got inadvertently dropped off of it last time you guys updated it for us. Page one is the final version we had submitted, and the bottom where that circled was notifications for when we send things out. That got dropped off if you look at page two right where your signatures are. And I circled that one in orange too.
So, that's, so every time somebody comes before the planning board for something, it's $10 per lot and then the $60 fee, that's standard for every butter that you have to notice, notify? That's where their fees come from?
Yeah, and that's been in there for several years. Somehow it got dropped off when we went to click print and brought it up. It was on page two or something. So, the...
I have that on the agenda.
So, the new one would be, that would be added with your signature block in there.
Then the research one is being removed?
Yes, so that was the original final draft, and that was your recommendation to have that removed, so that got pulled out. And when that got pulled out somehow we lost that...
Lost the one on the bottom.
The lost in the bottom.
You have it under new, okay.
Yeah, because if you're going to make a motion to, if you decide to sign it, you're going to make an actual motion on it.
I'll make a motion to sign the, one to an hour later.
Wait till we get down to new business.
Is there something else?
I thought I was here for these issues, but I see it's committee reports, so...
He's here for the zoning, they know why you're here.
Okay.
I told them.
Yep. So, we're good on that issue?
Do you have any questions while he's here? He doesn't need to say, you haven't had the intent of signing it, is that...
Yeah, I mean, if it was left off, I feel like I remember something on the bottom.
Yeah, he had a bunch of older ones too if you wanted to see it, so it went pretty far back.
That's fine.
Okay, so they're good with that, Ken?
The next one was, we were hoping we've got time to get one more or two more articles on the zoning ordinance which affects the land use table.
How's our timing for that? Are we getting tight?
Our schedule for our public hearings and stuff, because town meeting was pushed back a week or two, it allows it to happen, so I thought we'd at least ask. My board wanted me to ask. Originally I had said we've missed the deadline, but they thought there was no harm in asking. One of it in green, we'd be striking out the filling grading or other earth moving and actually calling it what it is. It's mineral extraction industry, it's a gravel pit. And if you look at page two, when you look under the mineral extraction, it's limited to 1,000 yards anyways. So, that would supersede, it's the more stringent one. So, on the land use chat, we'd be just getting rid of the zero in the end and coming in compliance with what the verbiage actually said on page 53. Does that make sense to you, or you want me to...
Yep.
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Okay. The other issue we had, we were looking at, is the filling grading. There's three different levels of it, and we were going to change the order to how it's proposed here. Now, it's, the first one is the third one, the second one is in the middle, and the first one is the last one. It goes backwards, it goes from 900, 9,900, and goes down. It's complicated to read. So, we were looking at changing the order, that doesn't need a vote, that's just moving it through the ordinance. But the planning board wanted to look at the third one down, which was 9,999, and dropping that down to 999, striking out that last nine. And as long as you guys are okay with us looking at it, then at our planning board meeting on Thursday, we'll clean this up and come back to you guys with a clean article.
None of this is in there right now, correct? It's not in our...
All the verbiage is, the numbers we changed last year, and the intent was to reduce it down to 1,000 yards, but it didn't get done. We overlooked a couple of things in there. As you know, you start talking 10,000 yards, you're looking at 1,000 dump trucks leaving per year unregulated, and the planning board wanted to reduce it down roughly to 100 in easy calculations. And those aren't gravel pits really, that's excavation on a site. And there's several things that are exempted, house lots and things like that.
So, this would require putting another article on the...
Two, right? You said two additional articles? So, one removing that.
Definitely I'd want the green one to move forward to clean up the...
So, it'd be two more articles?
Two more.
And that'd separate the other one just so it didn't get dragged down in the first one.
Yep.
And we have currently one article that we sent up in February for timber harvesting.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, okay. Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah, he's looking for thoughts, input?
I think that definitely if the green one is to clarify or clean something up, it should be included.
Yeah.
It is late in the game.
It is late. I mean, if you're going to put one in, it probably makes no harm to throw them both in on the same page.
Right.
That's what the board was, the board wanted to clean this area up.
You're just switching it around, it's not like...
Yeah.
Well, but it's going from 9,999 to dropping a whole nine off of there.
I thought we did this last year, you said we did it someplace else but didn't do it on here.
We looked at the one, yeah, exactly. And that's what's tough when it's in multiple spots in the ordinance is sometimes you miss some and not all of it, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just for clarity, if you add them, they're going to go to the end of the article? Because Warren and Finance has already voted on some of them, which will put zoning at the very end, 71, 72, 73, if you decide to okay them.
Is that a good thing or a bad?
Well, I'm just telling you, that means you're going to be there all day, because I know you usually like to sneak out, but there's, if they agree to move them, I mean, Warren and Finance is meeting on Monday. I'm not, and this is, it's my job to give them the other side, so shoot daggers. So, Warren and Finance meets on Monday to make their, what we think is their final recommendations. Are they going to be able to make a recommendation on that warrant article without hearing a public hearing?
That's true.
So, it's, you know, I mean, it's going to hold up the warrant being signed, just so that you guys are aware, because the Warren and Finance will not sign without a public, they won't make a recommendation without listing the public hearing.
So, you have a meeting Thursday night?
And when is the proposed public hearing, what are you thinking?
16th, I think? Because we have to have it 30 days prior to town meeting. Last year we had a, and we have had a couple of informational meetings on it, but we can't call it the official one until we get within the 30-day window.
Within a 30-day window or at least 30 days?
Within, I believe is how it's worded. Because you can't have one in February and then go vote in June, so I think they're restricted.
And we have a public hearing scheduled for when?
May 13th.
May 13th.
But you've already had a public hearing, so the warrant, and that was a secret ballot, so they don't make recommendations on those?
Right, but I was just wondering if we could piggyback this one on that one.
I'd have to, the zoning ordinances have their own special guidelines as far as public hearings, I'd have to look at the zoning, I don't know it like Ken does.
Okay. Just trying to keep things kind of grouped together.
Yeah, we were looking for May 16th, that's just a regular planning board member, and that gives us enough time to get it into the two publications and gets us in that window prior to town meeting.
Okay. So, we could draft, get it to the Warren and Finance, but it's going to be tight, it's going to be over.
So, they wouldn't be able to make a recommendation until like the 20th of May?
Yeah, they'd have the one, this one article left. So, they'd have to get together to... I'm almost thinking it's too late. As much as I want to put this through. So, what's the logistics of it? We can't sign the, we're not signing the warrant until...
She was hoping, right?
Right.
We can go through all the articles and get them all done except this one. I mean, we could even get this one done, but I'd like to hear the public comment. We have no...
What's the latest? We can sign the warrant?
Based on the schedule that you already posted or just in legal legalities?
Legalities.
Somewhere around June 4th.
Well, I don't think I'd want to do it that late though.
No.
You have another public hearing for something else on the 16th? Did I see that?
That is timber harvesting.
Timber harvesting for, and this is the second one, but the official one.
This is the official one, yeah. So, we just thought we'd be able to group them together if you guys had room on the warrant and we had the time.
They certainly have room, it's not, you know, it's certainly not that, it's just, it's getting through the...
I understand.
Michelle puts that timeline together.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? And we force it out there.
I'm only here to ask.
I know, and I hate being in the position I'm in because...
I said no at first, and they said it doesn't hurt to ask.
And it doesn't.
If you've already got one scheduled for the timber harvesting, which is already on the warrant, I mean, we still could make our recommendation, because we're not going to make, we're going to make a recommendation before the public hearing on the timber harvesting probably, for the warrant, so, yeah. I guess I have no, I have no issues if we can sneak it in.
Yeah.
We can sneak it in.
Yep.
If time allows.
We'll, we'll put it in.
Any more questions?
No, I think that'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, road committee.
Good evening, Leslie Berlin, acting chair. We had a meeting last Thursday and reviewed a couple of things that, and I thought we should talk about. We voted on Tattle Street, and I, we drafted a few, a couple of things that, you know, needed to, we wanted to address. There's three issues in addressing the release of these funds. The first one is, is the association a statutory or nonprofit association as required by law? The original called a meeting is the mechanism that establishes a statutory road association, and it takes three owners to call the founding meeting. They send a notarized letter with the meeting and photo of all property owners, and once established, the association remains in effect until dissolved. Tattle Street has provided us with the necessary documentation. The application to notary public to call a meeting was dated 4/19/2007 and notarized by Jennifer Rue on 4/20/2007 as required by statute. The date of the letter sent to the property owners was dated 4/30/2007, and any conflict after the establishment of the association does not dissolve the association, it merely becomes a civil matter between individuals. Tattle Street Association has also provided their bylaws and minutes of their last meeting. The second thing to be addressed is, will these funds protect a great pond, et cetera, from pollution? Yes. In fact, in the past, Tattle Street has applied and received 319 grant money. Tattle Street is on Mousam Lake, which is listed on the Maine DEP Lake NPS Priority Watersheds list. It is also listed on the Maine Integrated Water Quality, excuse me, Monitoring and Assessment Report. It is also identified as a medium risk in a completed watershed survey approved by Maine DOP. And the third thing to be addressed is, has the work been completed? It has. The road was inspected for completion of the work on April 24th of this year, and their road is in excellent condition. The road committee voted to recommend approval of releasing the $3,000 from the Article 43 statutory funds.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We, the next thing we did, we also looked at the issues on 7th Street, and in reviewing the town of Acton road ordinance, a Class B road in order to be accepted as a townway must have a minimum of 30-foot, 34-foot wide right-of-way and a feasible interest title conveyed to the town of Acton. The release deed that was provided only gives 20-foot, which disqualifies 7th Street from being accepted as a Class B road. The road committee is recommending that the ordinance be amended, or at least consider that. And the last thing was that we started going over the applications for stream crossing grants. We've looked at H Road and West Shore, and so we've started, we're gathering the extensive information required for submission. The District 1 Road Commissioner was present at our meeting and provided a great deal of information and is actively insisting in the information gathering. The District 2 Road Commissioner was not present. At the la, at the second to the last Warren Finance, Miss, Warren Finance meeting, District 2 talked about the Newbridge culvert and the availability of grant money. Gavin Mahoney informed District 2 about the road committee meeting held just prior and said he should talk to the road committee. All of the road committee members and both road commissioners were notified of our meeting last Thursday. District 2 did not attend the meeting, nor did he respond to emails notifying him of the meeting. If there was a conflict, we don't know about it. He appeared to be asking for help, but seems unwilling to communicate with the road committee who was spending hours upon hours to gather information to apply for grant money. Now, the question is, do we bypass District 2 to get it done, or do we simply not apply for the grants for the District 2 side of town? We are also concerned that if the road committee ordinance passes, District 2 will be a voting member of the road committee but as yet to attend a meeting or even to respond to emails. As a voting member, it is a, it's critical he participates. And as elected and appointed officials, the taxpayer rightfully expects us to work together for the betterment of the town. The road committee is looking for guidance from the Board of Selectmen to help resolve this apparent impasse.
We're going to be calling the road commissioner in and having a discussion with him.
Okay. I mean, because we, we would, and Elise, you sent me an email about Newbridge, that we'd love to do that, but I don't want to be spending, you know, having, the committee spend hours and hours and hours gathering information for nothing, you know, if, if we're not going to be able to, to pull it together. And, and I think the, the town and the taxpayer deserves...
You'll be able to pull it together, with or without him.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any, any questions?
No, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, old business. 911 assessing.
I have nothing new to add on this, I don't know if Ken does, as he's present, but him and I have not had a chance to go over it as of now.
Okay. 7th Street.
So, we've had, this is a pending item, I think that Mark is here somewhere. Is Mark here? Come on, do you mind coming up? All right, so I sent you guys an email that, so we had Brad Moore from Burke &amp; Clegg originally look at this, although Lankowski is our road attorney, we did find out, well, we knew that he helped them work on some of the deeds, so in an interest to be unbiased, we reached out to Burke &amp; Clegg. Brad did say in the email that the ordinance requires 34 feet conveyed as a fee simple interest, just like Leslie said, and he clarifies that, you know, the Board of Selectmen don't have the authority to bypass an ordinance spelled out by the voters. And there, there are some options, so the way it sits now, it can't go on the warrant, because it just doesn't meet the qualifications. However, in talking to Lankowski again regarding other roads in town, he does feel like that this will, it prevents several roads because of the non-conforming lots and how it's worded. So, he has put together a, a possible amendment that you could do in the road, road ordinance that would allow 7th Street, assuming we got the engineering report on the warrant. So, that is the legal recommendation for an amendment, so the voters would have to first approve the amended road ordinance, and then they would have to vote to accept 7th Street as a Class B road at the town meeting.
Okay. This is more copies of the same?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just going to put this out there because, again, I get to be that person, but we are extremely late in this warrant.
Yeah.
I don't think I'll ever send out a memo with deadlines on it again, no offense, I just, it is hard to do our jobs with all these adding and subtractions and listenings. With the road commissioner, the road committee making this change, I know the road committee's going to want to see it, because there's, you know, this is going to affect them.
Right.
So, I mean, we just added another one, so, you know, at this point, what's one more, but...
Yeah, but this one has some more parts and pieces to it.
Not really, it's no diff, I mean, you're adding, it's just one more article with underlying text. No different than having to have a public hearing, you would want, I'm guessing the road committee would want to see this amendment. Funny, huh Dennis?
What's that?
That's funny, huh?
Yes.
Yes. I got you, I know all about it, Joyce. So, these are the proposed changes, and do with it as you will. There's just one addition under that line that would need to be added.
Yep, and that is?
That's what he, what sent you, so under Class B where the fee simple is, the underscore, so it already says minimum of 34 feet.
Something else is needed, okay.
Nope, that's what he says would need to happen to get 7th Street on the warrant.
When is the road committee having their next meeting, do we know?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
I mean, they don't, there's nothing that says the road committee has to make a recommendation on the road ordinance, I just think that they probably would want to.
Probably would be a good idea, yeah. I'd say we kick this, are we going to entertain moving this forward?
Yeah, I feel like 7th Street has put a lot of work into a, a nice package getting their road ready, and if this is the only thing, we were planning to put them on the warrant anyways, but this seven feet on each side is causing an issue.
And this was written by the attorney, so as much as the road committee may want to look at it, I mean, this is Joe's recommendation, so short of sharing it with them, I mean, we're not looking for any changes. I don't know if there are other parts of the ordinance that need to be changed or updated.
Is everything else all set with Tattle Street? Has everything else been done?
Seven.
Seven streets, sorry.
Yeah, we still need a report from the road commissioner slash engineer to document what we've done, but everything else seems to be in line.
Okay, so we don't have that yet, or we do?
We do not have that yet.
Do not have that yet, okay. Do you anticipate getting that before, when do you, when do you anticipate getting that?
I thought I would have had it by now.
Okay. Okay, now, let's kick this to the road committee.
For what purpose? What are they, you want them to make a recommendation?
Make a recommendation on it.
On making this change?
Review it and make sure this is okay with them.
Okay.
And then, at that point, we will entertain putting it forward.
So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Road committee and road, road commissioner and road committee ordinances. Where do we sit with that? We had, what, a public hearing on it? We got another one coming up? We've adjusted and readjusted.
So, Mark, with an arrow, the changes that we made, this one is in the attorneys, in the hands of the attorney. The road committee made some minor changes too as well, which is not in brand, so we won't be going over that, but, oh, I did. So, the public hearing on this one is until May 13th, so this one will, so those are the changes on the six, on the road commissioner, the attorney knows that you need the, you need his recommendation by then. The road committee, really the only changes on this one were to allow the two members that are currently elected to see out their terms. And I've got some verbiage on the organization that I'll share with you next week, because I don't have it with me.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on this?
Oh, so the attorney's looking into the statutes?
Correct.
That's all.
Yep, that's what you asked for, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that, is that what this? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Tattle Street.
So, Tattle Street was old business pending a recommendation from the road committee in regards to Article 43. We did receive numerous emails from a resident on Tattle Street that had concerns about them applying for this. I thought the individual would be here tonight, I do not see him. But nevertheless, the only question that pertains to the town of Acton that's not civil is whether or not they, Tattle Street created their road association based on statute. And I do have an email from Lankowski, who is not tied to Tattle Street in any way, that says, Jennifer, based on the documentation attached in your email, I believe that Tattle Street Road in fact did and does qualify as a statutory road association form pursuant to Title 23 MSRA Section 101-6, and they would qualify for the, they would qualify based on the Articles Set forth in 43. I did forward that recommendation to the individual of all the concerns, it kind of went to some of their bylaws and maybe how Tattle Street has done things, so I forwarded those to the attorney, and he said that whether or not the association is properly following its guidelines in regards to how it treats members is not an issue for the town. That would be a civil matter between the members and the association. The town's only concern is whether or not the, properly formed and whether it continues to exist and function, which he believes it does, so he believes they qualify for the funds under Article 43.
Okay.
So, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Article 43 funds for Tattle Street.
In the amount of?
In the amount of $3,000.
I'll second that.
Moving to second it to approve the Article 43 grant, 43, for, yeah, Article 43 grant for $3,000 for Tattle Street. Any further discussion?
No.
Anything? Nope, okay, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, all opposed? Okay, Tattle Street, you have your money. So, great. Okay, paving bids.
I sent an email to both road commissioners last week asking them to print off and look at the quote for the paving. As of now, I haven't heard from either one of them.
Okay. Wish to make a, just to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, I just, the way, just send it out.
I need you to print it out, make any changes, the dates and everything.
Well, you just asked if there was any changes, there was no changes, that's why I didn't get back to you.
So, you can just at least reply to the email?
Yep.
So, I can...
But they can, just send it out and we'll see what the numbers come back.
Thank you.
And it was sent out that way, because last time Mr. Langley came up, he had a lot of changes. We had talked about doing, doing them a lot of different ways, so...
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Time to wait for the other road commissioner first?
Yes.
Thank you.
Liquor...
When did, I'm sorry, when did you send the email?
I want to say around the 24th, so...
I would call him, okay.
Yep.
I wouldn't wait for the email, okay? I'm gonna call.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know how email savvy he is. Okay, liquor, all set with that now?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Liquor license petition.
So, we have certified all of the signatures, and after removing the duplicates, it does have enough signatures to be put on the warrant, so it will be on the June warrant.
Okay.
Good job.
Good. We don't need to have a public hearing or anything on that?
No.
That's okay.
I don't think, I'll double check.
Was that by ballot, or was that by?
No, open town meeting.
Open town meeting, okay. Okay. Warrant updates.
So, just a follow-up. Just a follow-up from last night with Warden Finance. Make sure that you guys are on board with a couple of the page, a couple of the changes. So, we're not gonna do anything. So Article fourteen was to see if the town will vote to put the funds received in the sale of tax-acquired property into the capital improvement. They made a recommendation for undesigning the funds, so with your approval, we'll just change the wording in the article.
Yeah, I'm playing with that.
We have so little of that, it really isn't, doesn't matter.
You've had, what, one in the last seven years, eight years?
Yeah, if that. Couple of wording changes on twenty-two to see if the town will vote to, instead of appropriate revenues, accept revenues and swap to utilize with appropriated, which does the same thing, but just different words.
Okay.
Yep, and then language in Article twenty-three, just clarifying that the renewal is based on the sheriff's...
Contract.
Contract being approved by the voters. Article twenty-eight, we're gonna add the word "two" in to see if the town will vote to change "two," change the name "two." And I think that's as far as I got.
Okay.
So you're okay with those changes?
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good. Okay, anything else on the warrant updates?
Tell me.
No. No, at this time, I think that's it, we're done.
Okay.
I'm putting that in stone now, so. Okay, new business, lawn care bids.
For the last many, many moons, Robin Hamm and Hamm's Property Service has been our contractor for the lawn maintenance in all of the local surrounding areas that the town owns. We have gone out to bid many, many times. He isn't always the lowest, but usually we have one, maybe two competitors within a couple hundred dollars. But even when he hasn't been the lowest, the town has awarded it to him because he's a local resident that does a good job on all the property. So with that said, your policy says that you don't have to go out to bid. His price is forty-seven hundred, he's willing to give you that for up to three years, so the question is, do you want to go out to bid to see what else is out there, or are you interested in awarding it to him?
See, anything over five, we have to go out to bid, correct?
Correct.
What's your wishes?
I think he's been doing a good job, and he's local.
Mm-hmm.
It's under five thousand. He's got a...
It's broken down really well.
It's broken down.
Yeah, tells exactly what he's gonna do on each.
Yep. My only question is, can we sign a contract, as this probably would be seen, for three years?
It's no different than what you do with, with the auditors or with the sheriffs, I mean, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have opposition to that, the money, I mean, even if you sign a three-year contract, if the voters don't approve the money, he doesn't have the contract, but that's true with all of the multi-years that you do.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to, it's not really a bid, I mean, is it? I guess, I would make a motion to award the mowing and lawn care services to Robin Hamm, Hamm's Property Services. Does it have a date?
It's a three-year from...
For up to three years. I guess, what would, for a three-year contract or agreement? For forty-seven hundred dollars a year.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Nope, call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. There's not necessarily a place on this to sign, so...
Just initial it, that would be fine.
Please. Thank you, Robin. Okay. Committee, Department Communications.
Just looking for approval from the Board of Selectmen that correspondence going out to different committees and departments from, on behalf of your office, that just, that they only go to the chair of the committee, and that we put the responsibility on the chairman to forward it to their current members.
I think it sounds like a good idea.
Yep.
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 Yep, go ahead. Okay, land use fees, as Ken had presented to us earlier. What's your wishes?
I'll make a motion to accept the Town of Acton land use fee schedule as presented tonight, with the adding back in what was left off.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept the fee schedule as presented tonight by our Director of Planning. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor? All opposed? Would this one here be, that one has it in there, it doesn't have the other piece on there? Acceptable to sign this one?
I didn't review it.
Okay.
So did you sign one of them?
No, because you haven't reviewed it.
Well, I trust that Ken reviewed it.
Yeah. I believe that, I mean, we've looked it over, so...
Yeah, it's added.
Yeah, okay.
Sign away.
Thank you. Okay.
Individual from Tattle Street has been communicating with us, Ed, you recall, and Ken, regarding the use of calcium chloride on some private roads. Again, I expected the individual to be here tonight, as he requested these items beyond the agenda. We did meet with this individual as a workshop, if you will, a couple of months back, and we did, you included, Ed, we told him to gather data on these documents, on this product that he felt was harmful, and that he wanted the town to step in and insist they stop using it on Tattle Street. He referenced a particular zoning that he thought that it violated, although the entire state of Maine uses it along with many others, he thought that it violated the zoning. So, he did send over those MSCS sheets, you guys saw them, you saw the pictures, in an effort to get an opinion from the attorney. He quickly stopped us and said, you know, let's remember the chain of command and the rules that we think your board wants us to follow. If someone has a concern about a decision that code enforcement made, because it's Ken who has made the decision that it does not fall under five point two point one as being a hazardous material, then the individual needs to appeal that decision in writing, and he would have the opportunity to go to the zoning board. So I was hoping to explain that to the individual tonight, he's not here, so if he reaches out again regarding it, I will catch him up.
Yep. When I saw the, when I saw the pictures and whatnot on that, that's the first thing that came to mind, was give it to Ken, so, okay. Okay. Is that?
Yeah.
Workshops.
So, since I will be sending out an email to the board regarding, to the committees and departments regarding communications and how we'll handle them moving forward, in that memo, I would like to put something about workshops. Does the Board of Selectmen want workshops filmed?
We've...
These are, you know, whether they're road committee workshops, whether they're planning board workshops, Warden and Finance, and Board of Selectmen workshops, they either need to film them all and go across the board or not.
We have been, correct?
You have been, yes.
Yes. Your thoughts?
Other than the four o'clock workshops, I think that they should be filmed.
So all workshops will be filmed?
Well, I mean, we already do...
Well, the planning board is holding workshops twice a month, those aren't being filmed.
Oh.
So we need to either include those or not make other committees get theirs filmed.
How do we sit budget-wise, I guess, with the filming?
I think there's, I don't think there's any concerns there. I know that he's always, he had the public meetings and the workshops, he keeps saying that if we have anything, to reach out to him.
Okay.
We can double check.
Yep.
And yep.
I just, I mean, to be consistent across the committees.
Yep. The workshop that we had with the...
Road committee and the commissioners.
Road committee, we filmed.
Yep.
Yep.
Saturday, the Saturday workshop we have in March for budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll send that memo out tomorrow.
Yep. Okay. Okay, public comment.
Dennis Long, I'm not quite sure why I was called out for giggling there a little bit, but I will explain to why it was. Since this road ordinance was adopted, I said it was unattainable to the people on these roads. The town doesn't meet these standards with our own work and without our tax dollars. And seeing a amendment to the ordinance just made me chuckle a little bit, because I wanted this a lot of years ago, so that these people wouldn't have to go through this stuff. And the other thing is, when it comes to the zoning changes that we're talking about, and I'm just talking as a Warden Finance committee member, this stuff is pretty well explained out, and at least from my part, if the selectmen have everything ready for us, I would intend to be done Monday night. That was our schedule that we laid out there, so I guess it's really back in your court.
So you think the Warden Finance will vote on them without the public hearing?
I, I think they're very clear, the way they are, I mean, it's, I mean, the stuff down, that Ken brought forward is more of a housekeeping thing than anything, to clarify what we already have, it was just something...
Nine, right.
And, and the amendment to the road ordinance is pretty clear in itself, I mean, so I don't think it really needs a lot of in-depth research done, because I think it's all been done. That's my intent, I'm only one person, but I do have a tendency to sometimes have the biggest mouth, so you didn't have to agree so quick, at least.
Sorry. We will do our best to get those articles on for Monday.
I think that probably was across the board, just to be clear.
I can't help my body language sometimes.
Joyce Backshee, Planning Board Chair. As far as our twice-a-month Wednesday workshops, the idea of having to pay for a workshop that's open to the public, we go through so many things that do not involve actually the public. We, a lot of the housekeeping issues that you learned of tonight are things that we found. We do not sign anything, we, they are open to the committee, as many people that can make it on the committee, that's why we don't sign or vote anything. What we come up with gets brought to the full board. The way our meetings go, they're on alternate Thursdays. One, one Thursday is our workshop, the second Thursday is our meeting at seven o'clock at night. If we did not have our noon time workshops, we could easily be there till ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night. And as much as we all love what we do, or we wouldn't do it, we don't get paid, and none of us wanna be there till eleven o'clock. So then to turn around and have to pay, I think it's like fifty bucks to have, just kinda seems like, you know, a hundred dollars a month is money that could be spent better, you know, someplace else. And as I said, anybody can walk in, sit down, we're right downstairs at noon time, it's a public meeting. And as you all know now, our public meetings can be rather...
Interesting.
Interesting at times, so, I think it's an unnecessary expense, I really do. You know, we're cutting money here and there, and we're looking to save money, so, you know, twelve months?
Well, we can't really pick and choose between your committee and the other committees, though.
Franchise money.
So, I mean, we either have to say no to all workshops.
But then, then your workshops will be filmed too, you know, your Thursday.
That's what I'm thinking, like...
I mean, that's not what I heard. So your four o'clock workshops henceforth will be, or when this goes into effect, will be filmed.
Doesn't bother me.
Correct?
Our workshops may be come office hours.
Yeah. Once the election... So much to the fire chief, I can, I will look into and explain to the attorney exactly what happens on Thursday, Tuesdays at four, and get you an opinion.
Yep.
In the meantime, are we gonna continue to film workshops?
Continue to film workshops.
Right now.
And Joyce, you said the key word in your very first opening statement, "public."
Right.
So it's all, it's all just to get it all out to the public.
Well...
For instance, the workshop that we had with the road committee, you know, that was one of the best workshops I think I've seen in a long time.
It was an excellent workshop, absolutely.
Yeah, a lot, a lot got thawed out during that workshop.
Right. I was, I was here to see it.
Yep, but that's all information that needs to be out to the public.
Anybody who wants to...
And the ones that don't get here, so...
Yeah, but anybody who wants to come can come.
Oh yeah, yeah.
You know, so, I just think, you know, if you guys are filmed, then it's across the board. Otherwise, to me, I feel like it's pick and choose.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, well, that's the way it feels, like it's pick and choose.
Okay.
And it is twelve hundred bucks a year that we're spending. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments?
On Saturday, we had a cleanup day, and it was a great day, a lot of great volunteers, and unfortunately, I think we only made a dent in the trash. But a few people mentioned, we don't have any signs all over town trying to discourage people from littering. Do, is that something you guys would order, do not litter signs, or is that something the sheriff has to do? But I think it would be a good thing, do not litter, and say that there's a fine, I don't even know what the fine is, I think it's five hundred dollars.
Wouldn't we have to adopt something if we had a fine?
Oh, that's a...
I mean, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could create a policy. The town can put signs on town roads, that's something that you can authorize the road commissioners, they can order their own signs, and they can take care of that, but as far as fines, you know, you probably need to, either do a policy or ordinance, I'd have to look into it.
Okay.
It would be worth it, because it's just unbelievable, the amount of trash people leave.
Yeah.
I mean, we picked up fourteen tires, and we didn't even go all around town, so, but that would be great if we could do that, thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I noticed that one oh nine looked better. There were some spots where perhaps somebody thought a truck was coming through and it hasn't, so there's a couple piles.
We were only able to do one side of one oh nine, that's kind of a dangerous road.
Yes.
So, we're hoping maybe we can do another day of it, and what they would like to do is have a truck in front, a truck in back, all the volunteers in the middle, the trucks flashing, so it's far more safe. It's just not, it's a dangerous road.
Right.
People are going fifty, sixty miles an hour, and you're bending over and picking up trash.
Yeah.
So, they only did one side, but, a lot of people had a lot of fun cleaning in front of their own homes, and, you know, on their own neighborhoods and so forth, but more than one person commented on, maybe we need to start encouraging people to do the right thing with signs.
Well, Route one oh nine is a state road, maybe we can ask the state to come through and pick up what was left behind, because I know there's piles.
And signs too, wouldn't they be responsible for putting at least that, that one, but...
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once more, public comment? Nope, seeing none. Announcements, Senator Collins' representative will be in the building here, May third, from nine to ten. Lions Club Breakfast, May fourth, eight to ten, that's always a great thing. Comedy show down at the school, May tenth, at six-thirty. You can talk about fancy and fancy...
Fancy Nancy Tea Party on Saturday, May eleventh, at ten a.m., the library's hosting that. I'm not quite sure what it is yet, but it may just describe itself in the title. Also, the library, it's not on here, but on May eighth, at the Wakefield Opera House, AWI, the Gaffney Library and Acton Public Library will be hosting a water talk at two o'clock on local fish.
Okay. Public hearing here at the town hall, May thirteenth, it's a road commissioners and road committee ordinance that we had discussed earlier. Looking for an EMA director, has been posted, May twentieth... Looking for an EMA director has been posted. May 20th is the deadline. And I just want another thing to add to this, and that is the change of the speed limit down at the foot of the lake.
Yes.
So, everybody knows. It's dropped to 35 by the Trading Post, and it's gonna be 40, I think, before you get to that. So, that's, that's all in the works. I think there's still some more signs to go up down there. But it is, it is dropped to 35 right at the Trading Post, yeah.
I was gonna ask, where's the speed trailer at?
It's put away for the winter.
Okay. I was wondering if we should have it put out there in front of the 40 sign, just as a...
Yep, there's a couple of the stakes down there, up this way from the field, that I think they're gonna put some more posts up. But I'm not positive. Because right now, it drops, it goes from 50 to 35.
It goes, no, there's 40 in there.
I get the 40.
I was just gonna say, coming, coming into town, it's 35, like it's always been, by Barubis and Emery Mills. And it's 35 all the way through by the Trading Post. Until you get to roughly 7th Street, somewhere in there, then it goes to 40. And then, once you go up to Holdsworth's driveway, just north of the driveway, probably a few feet, it goes to 50. So, and the York County Sheriff's, there was three of them there this weekend, and they're really patrolling it.
Been patrolling it heavily.
Very, very heavily there, so, and everything, so... And that, yeah, so just wanted to let you know that. Kind of out of sequence here. It was brought to my attention at a Road Committee meeting the other day. We have a letter, Joyce, the letter that you, the association...
No, the association. We, I got a copy of a letter from the state that I think you've seen...
In regards to West Shore Drive and the culvert?
Into all the bridges. It listed all the bridges that we inspected.
Do you want to come up to the mic?
I just wanted to...
What's the date on the letter?
If I could find it in the file this afternoon, I would have it.
Oh, so I probably have a copy of it.
You may. You, you possibly do. But the letter came in. It was from the, we received it in 2018. It was the January 2017 inspection, Row Bridge, Canal, West Shore, and the other one...
Just three bridges on that?
Three bridges perhaps on it, giving the state that they were in, I'm paraphrasing, in peril of being closed because of the subpar conditions. Again, I am getting her, the thing to David.
Yeah, so, in regards to that, it was brought to my attention, the culvert, and one of them was a culvert on West Shore Drive. Just so everybody's in the loop, I reached out to Fire Chief Johnson. We need to have an action plan in place, because if we do have a structural collapse on that culvert, and then standing up here as a deputy fire chief, I need to be able to react in a moment's notice. We have 110 homes on the other side of that culvert, and that's the only way in and out. So, working with the Road Committee and with the, blessing of the Board, we're gonna reach out to DP Office in Portland, get a representative out there, and get something in writing. So, if we need to pull the trigger and do something, fill that culvert in, do what we need to do for public safety, we need to be ready to go. I can't be waiting, you know, for somebody to come out and say, this is what you can do. This is what we are gonna do, and we will have an action plan. Probably bring EMA involved if we need to, so, just wanted to bring you guys up to, up to power.
That's a great idea.
Brought the light to me last week. So, I'm gonna get a copy of the letter, sit down with Chief Johnson. We're gonna do a field trip, go over there and see what we can do, maybe meet with Rudy Pepin and see if we have some other options, if we had to go cross-country or whatever, and get ourselves a plan together. So, I just wanted to bring it up to let you guys know what's going on, and we'll get something together, and I'll keep you posted right along, so. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you. Okay, do you have anything else?
No.
Do you have anything else?
I don't.
Anything else, Ken?
Do you? Can you come up?
I was just wondering, Karen McManus, I was just wondering who the representative for Susan Collins' office is coming?
It's, no, it's, they just send, they just send somebody, one of the office staff every year.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, is all set?
Yeah.
All set? All set, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All opposed? Tonight, all.